Really? I will open this meeting for the planning board for the town of Maynard. The date is August 27, 2024 and the time in 7:03. This meeting is being held in hybrid format, which means that members of the public, the board, or the applicant can participate here in Town Hall or virtually, virtually using Zoom that is provided on the agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. All of our members who are going to be here tonight are present in Town Hall. And so. Let's look at the agenda. We'll do minutes last. So we'll start with the public hearing for 1416 Hillside Street. Which is being continued from July 23, 2024.
Yeah, I'm present. I'm attending here to ask for a continuance to September 24.
Is that our next available meeting, Bill? Does that?
Well, that was the one that. The press. Had worked out with Justin, so the 24th would be. Yes.
Okay. Um.
Just. But I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I didn't. The requests. Booked in writing for continuance this today certainly well, so.
Okay.
And this has been discussed with.
Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts on continuing or want to make a motion?
Make a motion. As objectives. Make a motion, we. Continue the public hearing for 1416 Hillside Street to. Now, September 24.
Second.
Let's do a vote. We don't have to do world call vote if we're all here, right?
Correct.
Show of hands, vote to continue the meeting. That's four zero. Thank you.
All right, Justin.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And yes, I believe that there was also a request for it to continuance for Green Meadow Elementary School, right?
It's. The board has little backgrounds. Comments, the. The terrible sound machine. We give enough time for the feedback, so the applicant and. And the chair. Makes us to. Have comments ready for the next. Meeting on the September.
The 10?
September 10.
Yep. All right, is there any discussion from the board about continuing Green Meadow?
I will vote to continue the public hearing for Green Meadow. Elementary School. To September 10.
Second.
Show of hands vote to continue the meeting. Or nothing. And next on the agenda, we will open the public hearing for 52 Main Street and a patient from Domino's Pizza. Yes, I would like, um, yes, if you'd like to come sit up in front. Thank.
I need to clear, this is a. This is a. Is just about in front of the fast food use. And. This is a. My. Just a good back to use.
Great.
That's what the board is. Pressed in. Yeah, this minute.
Yeah, if you'd like to introduce yourselves. If you want, you don't have to.
My name is James. I've been on the, I've been working for Domino's Pizza about like 10 years. I own the one location which is next to Maynard Acton.
Yep.
About two years. It's like the, I just wanna, I used to live in Maine. Two, three years. I know Maine, Maine is like, you know, the portable and better quality pizza. Whoever I spoke to, and I have a lot of customers coming to Maine, from Maine to Acton, they are asking delivery and stuff. Unfortunately, Domino's doesn't let us do more than nine minutes delivery. That's why I decided to open one location in Maine to help complete the school and anything needed.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Bill Lawhand. I'm the licensing and permitting consultant. Domino's is. My biggest client. If there's a question or concern. They call.
Thanks.
And. What thing hasn't, hasn't told you is it is tied to Maynard. We've extended to this location. Because it's at least, at least with the empty bridges. It's permitted to the sound. All I can say is that I was basically like playing basketball against me. I don't remember if it ever was one, but the answer that. Basically. I think a little explanation is in order because. We know this is a. Turn or there are questions about traffic and traffic studies and this and the other. And. I could traffic itself and that we work with and. Of Domino's. Or some Domino's. Uh, and, and I said, well. The town wants to see traffic study. And he kind of chuckled. Cause he said. This is Donald, right? And I said, yes. What traffic? Is the only traffic is your car delivered. That, that's, there's a couple of things that I'm sure people come before, for this, the board, every other board in town. It started with, yes, we know what the regulations are, but they don't apply in this particular case. And they throw that at you a lot of times. This is clearly much, often time and. It, it doesn't apply to. We can start with rest of them. We don't have anybody coming into Domino's. You know, to sit down and have a meal. Doesn't matter. More than 90% of our business every day. Is, is delivered. Take it to you. And. What the new thing, the new, we, we've done with, with Domino's and there are not that many franchises in Massachusetts that have to drive up. Because a lot of, a lot of them in mini malls, so they're in. Areas that there's, there's, there's no space. For a, for a drive through. It was just isn't. This is an unusual case. Used to be a bank. Bank was a water to drive through. I came around Main Street today, we've got another old bank that's for sale, that's got a project. So this is coming back, but it, it's not done. Uh, and so. We did a study. Uh, ourselves. And. We did it once I in, 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 in Spences. Where we counted. All the cars for the day that came through the drive thru. And it was 12.
Yeah, very.
Between 10 a.m. and midnight. Probably averaged about two and a half. We do have a drive up Kingsborough, Brockton, Acton, Freetown, Bay Harbor. And, and that's because they need the locations that had to drive through a bank or. A dump in Domino's or something like that. And that's what we have. We try, it's not a drive thru, it's a drive up. And we'd have to do a little bit of explaining what's the difference because I would say it's drive up and pounds of them. Wait, if you call whatever you want, we're gonna call it the drive thru. When you go to the drive thru, the first thing you do is stop at the vending boy. And place your order. Okay, so now you're in line, you place your order and I am moving up, dive up to the window. And. They may have your order ready, they may not. If it's a pizza. Then you can't do that. I mean, it, it, it can take, during rush hours in some, some locations. It can take you 15, 20 minutes. Between ordering and getting your pizza. And those locations where they have to, to, to drive up. We have to tell people, okay, give us the order. Then please go apart. Come on and sit down. That's the only thing they can do. And, and so when, when it works right. It's people that are called, they're calling up on the phone. And they're giving us the order. And they pay for it. Online. And so they drive up. And they will give. The name. Robert Darabedian. Cool, turns around, Daisy Pizza, have a good night. Maybe 30 seconds, maybe a minute. Okay, and that's it. And we're talking about places that are, and even under those circumstances, you know, 12 cars a day. And so a lot of the regulations and requirements and restrictions that apply to food establishments. Really don't apply to Domino's. And, and it starts with the fact that this Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Considers. Domino's Pizza. A bakery. And it's considered a bakery because we don't cook anything. To be a restaurant, you've got to cook something. Uh, we have a. We have, everything comes. From Domino's. Food, paper, paper goods. And all food. Comes from Domino's, that. And they don't have the, the right to go buy from anybody else. Uh, this is the, we've probably seen this in some. Some pizza establishment. This is the oven. You want to call it an oven. Yes, gas. And it's on a conveyor. Make the pizza, put on it, there it goes. Comes out the other side, it's cooked. And. There is no flame. It's visible flame, even though by regulations, we've got. You know, fire extinguishers on both sides of the, of the oven. Uh, and it's exhausted off of the roof. And so. Nothing is cooked, it's, it's baked. Uh, everything, every piece of food, every meat is, is pre-cooked when it comes into Domino's. All we're doing is reheating. Uh, we always have this problem with a lot of towns over the road, we knew they wanted, they want to have an external grease trap. It can cost 20, $30,000 when you. They were taken. Okay. Well, we don't generate other any grease, so we have to go through all of the documentation which we do. That an internal grease trap is, is more than that, but. Uh, will handle twice as much grease as the typical Domino's store. And, and so. We're in a different situation here, okay? And so when I went to the. Back I wanted to. The, as I said before, the trap, people, we work with. They, they kind of chuckled. And they said, what, what traffic, people, temporary traffic. In this, especially this particular location. We have seven parking places, parking spaces on our site. Even if there was someone who wanted to come into. Place the order in person, sit down, wait, this, this spot within the park off the street. On our location, a lot. So, you know, for all of those reasons. We're not impacting anything. Except. We're bringing. An empty store. On Main Street. And turning it into a. Tax paying, employing. High cost establishment. And, and cities and towns should welcome. Uh, we will probably be hiring approximately 15 people. Some hot time, some full time, there's lots, we have lots of people in our other location. That, hey, I'm looking for, you know, three, four hours a day. Mother's, that, you know, okay, my kids are in school. But I can, I can handle like three or four hours a day. And that can have a significant impact. On family income. Major bright one who wants. Go someplace with two, three or four extra hours. Put them in a different. Financial situation, they can do that with us. And so we, it was the same thing with, with high school kids that stayed in college. Things like that. They, they, they can do that. Uh, we. For Domino's, in this particular case. We're asking to be open from 8 a.m. to midnight. Seven days a week. I have Domino's. That I negotiated. That are open until 4 a.m. Uh, 3 a.m., 2 a.m. Just got approval for 3 a.m. Two weeks ago. To Boston, going on the, go to Boston. And that's one of the reasons for that is. People will always ask. Say, who buys pizza at midnight, who buys pizza at 2 a.m., 3 a.m.? And the answer is lots of you. Uh, second and third shift workers, first responders, hospitals, police, fire. And.
Just, just to clarify, are you planning on asking for those hours for this location?
Yes.
I intend to.
Yes, submit, so, yeah. Okay, great.
And we did have one, one particular incident in Charleston, like I did that one as well. Right on Main Street. And. Main Street in Charleston. After 10 o'clock, it was, it's dock. So there's virtually nothing. So a young lady who got off the bus. Main Street in Charleston, parked home, closing midnight. And suddenly realized that she was being followed. Really just panicked. And she says, it was dock, nothing was open, there was no place to go, and all of a sudden she saw a light. Light was on. She ran in. Assistant manager of the school, the owner. Then came back and she said, thank God, someplace or something. Uh, and so when we, when we go, the second and third shift forces. Midnight is lunch for second and fourth. Right? A lot of people don't understand that, and waiting, especially if they're talking about. We don't play in the office. Everywhere. They, they don't even have a lot of big areas. And really go for a. Talking about, and we, we will deliver to that. Normally, and if we worry about getting. Uh, and so when people understand that there is a need. We usually don't have a call.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great.
Sir, any clarification I want?
Yes, please.
Okay, and I think the apple should prove that this is not. Special permit for a drive thru, this area is not, but that. That determination is made in. A drive thru. That we know constitutes drive thru. So this is not. Here.
Yes, I do understand how it can be different, but that seems like it will be a separate step.
And this was a burnt building commissioner's determination on it. So then we, I think we, we. And it said that, and it's why I've explained that, 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 yes, your definition with drive thru, that, that's fine, a window is the drive thru.
Yes.
There was a drive thru. This, it's a physical drive.
For sure, I, in the advent of online ordering, Dunkin's has that too, where you can place an order and just drive up to get it. But yes, it's all in the same lane, so it does make it a little more complicated, but.
I just want to clear something, like for us, there is no allow to order under the, under person.
Right.
There's something, customer has to order online.
Yep.
Make the payment, we don't accept the cash or online order. Make the payment, come to the window, instead of like a basic bit, when you apply for the drive thru. When they, instead of they are coming, parking in the car behind. Walking in the store, taking the order, when we make the car, it's not the same parking spot, we want them to, customer to order online. Instead of coming to the store, go to the drive thru, come to the window, handed to them, they don't have to get out all I wanted because the reason. Other people, paying, who doesn't want to get out the car, make them like, you know, the easier to pick up.
But that is not being discussed tonight.
No.
Okay.
This is for like, that later on, like this, on the dimension.
Yeah.
Yes, Phil, for some clarification.
Yes, please.
So. Right, we're not, right? We're sorry, this, this is a special permit for the use.
Fast food.
Right, and the special permit criteria is.
Yeah.
In 10?
Yeah, it, we, because it's in a downtown, I believe, there's. We're generally looking for special payment.
Oh, so they gotta do the regular special permit criteria and the BODs, but. Regardless, it's every same.
Well, yeah, there's, 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 yeah, there's the additional obligations of the. Downtown.
Correct, so the request for use. Requires the standard special permit criteria and M D O D and special thing.
That is correct.
And is there a. Site plan approval required because of the change in parking requirements?
No, that, um. That determination was made that it would. Did not, because of the previous uses. That it was not going to be secondly required. So. The previous use of a bank, the, the downtown location. That DOD. It was a determination was made by the building pressure that it's not. Necessary to say, just this fast food special.
We have already received the building. That they've already started. Interior.
Are there any seats in this? There are no seats. And, and your employees, how many employees do you expect that even for the shift?
Approximately, what's gonna happen, one person, one driver, one insider is gonna open. And then there's one other, like the one, when pursuit is done, other, one, one is gonna come 5 p.m. to close.
So it was only one employee?
One insider, one driver. On 5 p.m. Other second employees are one more driver, one more insider is gonna come 5 to close, whoever make the opening, they're gonna leave around 7:30, 8:00 when the rush is done between 5 and 8:00.
So one person will be able to handle all those pizzas?
In acquisition, this day exactly, I can bring it to my state.
Okay, thank you.
And Phil?
Yeah.
Is all the information being submitted for this? Application? These two things?
You know, just the, so. Other analyses are all, we're just trying to forward to that, just remember. Site plan. And, and the building.
Yeah, there's no, there's no exterior change, oh, there's no footprint changes. This was just strictly a use, there is a, if a sign is changed, it'll be. And like early moments.
We're not getting any transportation analysis or not?
Uh, not for this, it's inappropriate. Like I say, the idea of transportation analysis for an existing structure in downtown. That's previously rebuilt. It, with the drive thru. Perhaps. It's a board, one, the board wants. I would say that we, we would have to be sure that we're prepared to do that for other applicants who come in. And if the, you know, if there's another similar business came in and towards requesting. Typically.
Of, of course, my, my issue is not. Volume ridden. My issue is, sorry, my issue with a pair of extra wide driveways. Crossing. A heavily trafficked sidewalk. And that clearly. Is covered by one of the. Special permit criteria considerations.
Sure.
So I'm a little surprised I don't see any. There is. Valuation of that circumstance.
There is a stop sign. At the. At the end of the, it's at the beginning of the building. As you approach the sidewalk.
On the exit.
Yeah. And that will stay, will stop.
And, and are you speaking of the traffic engineer?
Well, no, but the stop will be there. Stop sign will be there, they'll be able to stop line. As well. And. And that's exactly what the bank can enable.
All right, so let's take a look at this. In order, I think we're gonna be starting with track, traffic flow and safety, because that seems to be. A concern from the board. So, looking at the site. People will be entering. To the right of the building. I'm sorry, I'm not great with directionals, but yes, the right side of the building. There will be no parking along that right side of the building, that's just a driving lane, which I believe is something like. 15 feet wide or something? I don't remember. Let me see if I can.
From the back of the building to the lot line. Is 29 feet.
Yeah, I mean, the driving aisles on either side of the building. And then, as you said, there are seven parking spaces, no, six parking spaces in the back.
Yes.
Yes. And so those parking spaces will be used for both the delivery driver. And any customers who choose to come and pick up.
And you can see at the end of the drive lane. The stop sign is.
Yep.
And there will be a stop sign past the building as well.
Right. And there is a handicap parking space?
Yes.
And that one.
I, I, I looked at that. It said, so it's. Honestly.
Are you asking for relief from those parking?
Let's see, those parking spaces look like they are.
No, there's no relief.
Nine feet wide and.
If the requirement is nine feet. Seems to be private.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see what the length is, but I'm having.
It's not much.
Is it nine by 20? Okay. And.
ADA spots, that. Is that how that is supposed to be set up? I thought normally on ADA spot, there's. Striping one side or the other. Just kind of looks like a regular spot.
Well, here.
Yeah, I don't see how that would be able to access a lift on the passenger side. But that's a lawyer.
To get room around the back, that's closest to the door.
And even the. Driver left would be into the. Driving lane to the driver. Weird.
It's in the back, the back corner of the parking lot.
How many spaces do you need for function? Regular parking?
Yeah.
We almost, you know, actually maximum at the same time comes a good customer. Like in Friday rush, I was in March and three, four, I never seen that in. At the same time, then go custom inside the. That's why I. Um, like parking was not my biggest concern, to be honest.
Right.
How many employees do you have?
It's eight, two at a time.
Two at a time. So you think you need five or six active spaces?
Maximum. Normally, like, you know, most of the inside employee either have a bicycle or they don't use the car, most of like, I need one for the drivers.
Right. And, and the deliveries only. And and the deliveries only, it the distance to nine minute distance in 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 the area.
Yes. That's the dominant rule, they they don't allow us.
So so do they have some type of device, Macau, where it's clocked nine minutes?
We have like this special map they are making for us.
Yeah.
Even if the customer tried to, for example, if you try to order from now random actual location. You're, it's like an all over order.
Okay.
It's like all truly operate like a.
Everything's done online.
Yes, so that means eighteen minute round trip.
Or, or, oh, pardon, eighteen, I thought you were gonna say eighteen mile over.
But. I mean, if you, I don't, I don't know how it works.
That whole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, because you might stack different, right? Um so I'm just trying to think of like hourly trips, how many? If we're just talking about the delivery driver. That's like.
Well, the delivery driver could go out with. Two, two or three orders.
Right. Um.
But uh. Within that nine minute, uh nine mile.
Nine mile within nine.
Time.
And they could, they could also go out to a place that's two minutes away.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so there's a lot of flexibility there, but. Um, we're not talking. Dozens and dozens of trips an hour.
Oh, no.
Do you have any, do you have any data on like what the general?
Uh you can use that from the, the day I'll book about the like the main, is it Spencer location? Yes, they have the drive through and everything. They. These are the first, like a couple pages shows you. Order like the for pickup windows, six, last second page is. Show like the. Just regular customer came inside to pick up.
So.
My copy.
You guys did.
Yeah, I don't really wanna accept that. It's got personal information.
Yeah, but as long as it.
It's just like, you know, I'm trying to say like, for example, first or who came like a twelve, they open like a ten.
People's names and phone numbers. Yeah, I don't want this.
Okay, what kind of documentation I can bring it to?
Snuggler documentation, that would be a very fine.
The problem is like, you know, whenever that we plot like any reports in the dominos, they give us like all this information.
Okay, can you just read some of it?
Yeah, for example, first order came twelve thirty.
Yep.
Pickup window, and then second order came for four P M, four eighteen, pickup window, five fifteen, five fifteen, at the same time came only like the. One customer. Four. Thirty seven, probably just some other time order, they they started and come to pick up. And then nine fifty three, seven oh eight, seven forty eight, eight eleven. None of them. Giving close to each other.
So, yeah, I think.
We're talking about one an hour. And don't like.
Right.
And then, and we can go to delivery. First delivery came for forty four. Six P M, six eleven. Five.
Okay, I get the idea, thank you.
You guys allow delivery after hours or?
I'm ready.
You allow delivery after hours or not?
What do you mind?
Over eat.
Or after guys.
We are starting to work with like the over eat, but we don't allow like a risk driver to come to us. They profit the dominoes right now. When the customer place order from reset, it's rolling us the on our system and our driver doing the door.
Okay.
Basically like, we don't do anything with the risk driver or companies, it comes to dominoes. It's all to the domino.
So all deliveries are gonna be coming from your employee?
My driver, my.
And and part of the reason for that is, is we have a, a national advertising campaign. Your dominoes at, it's going to be on the mentions. Uh. If you tip your driver three dollars. Or one. You will get a three dollar. Your certificate, put the next, we're in next door. Uh. With that, drivers to doing pretty well. Especially if they're doing food free deliveries an hour. Uh because they're also getting. Expenses for the car. Yeah, so. Uh so, I I would, it's doing pretty well. So we didn't wanna take away. So that we. Not possible. It will be a dominant driver, it's.
If the, if there was a permit and it had a condition that all deliveries had been made by Domino's employees, would that be? Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm new.
If there was a permit, if the permit had a condition, all deliveries have been moved by Domino's, gonna have. Domino's employees. Would that be okay for you?
We book additions, if if there's a permit issue, typically have a list of conditions, maybe something like hours of operation, whatever. What Mr. Franch is asking is there may, if the conditions place requiring. Do the risk only be made by Domino's.
Portugal.
Yeah, you're asking.
Yeah. Yeah, it was like exactly like that, because they don't allow us to like to do something like that. They make us like to deliver everything from our. Drivers.
No door dash.
No.
Yeah.
That's something hundred percent. Because if we do that way, basically like the, we are gonna take the money from our employee. If the dominant driver, I mean, the for risk driver came to pick up the order, and if driver makes like a couple of dollars in a car. They're gonna make less, and that way we cannot able to keep the employee, that's the main reason Thomas is not doing this kind of stuff.
So. Sorry. Um. I mean, I think part of the. Sorry, I'm just looking up the map, because I wanna take a look at the sidewalk situation, because I do think that that is some of what my concern was. Just in terms of them. Yeah, would you mind bringing up? Sorry. Um. Sorry, just give us one minute to pull up. What the sidewalk's gonna look like. Because that building has been vacant for so long, you know, I think it's just gonna take a while to. For people to. Get a handle on it being in use again, especially if it's a successful. Business. Um. So we're trying to, you know, imagine what. What the pedestrian. What the pedestrians would be experiencing. Um.
You don't.
Thanks, Bill.
Really big.
That's more than nine minutes, like now.
This is. Yeah, this is impressive, Google Maps can bring up. It's hard to find your bike. Then.
What we're reading, do you guys have any?
Uh um. So I I I'm I'm just trying to Domino's website right now, and there's, there's a delivery force, and then I'm seeing here that there's a carryout. So if there's only two, if there's only one employee inside dealing with. Customer. How, is someone else gonna carry out the pizza?
No, no, carry.
No, no, there are. The customer would carries it up.
It's like car, it says car side delivery.
I think that that, and it says only available where it says carryout. Methods available at participating stores, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem, no. And although the, I can tell you one. Thing over there, it takes our side, our side is only like all like a certain time, which may, maybe have like an extra and more.
Okay.
You can able to come for it that off, I don't know.
Yeah, that would be nice, to just bring it out and they just go.
Thank you, Bill.
Can you see it?
Yep. Is that, that's shared, right?
It is, yeah. That. That is a wide drive.
It is a wide drive, it's a nice, it's a nice spot. Uh. So what we're looking at, if you go, if you go down the street to the right a little bit, Bill.
Listen, because.
Thank you. So that parking spot, that's kind of part of my concern, is that there's a parking spot right in front of. Look, look optical. So that it's a pretty sharp turn, you know, into the driveway. Um. So. If there's a car parked there, I just wanna make sure that the visibility of pedestrians who are walking. And whoever's turning in. You know.
Yeah, that's that's double the width of the driveway.
Yes.
You got.
So if. The width of the driveway were narrowed. Then. Cars would probably enter more slowly.
Yeah.
Do you have any large vehicles entering the site? I mean, the deliveries.
It was always said, break on in the middle, my.
Okay, do you mean like a food delivery?
Yes.
Or just like overnight? It comes usually like, you know, overnight, with kind of, they got the key. They're going inside, taking everything, taking the empty stuff, loading door.
What size vehicles?
It's like the bus. It's not like a huge one second, the box.
A a box truck, okay.
Yeah, it enters the site. I'm sorry, it enters the site. Or it parks in the street.
It depends, like a problem, like a for this location, I will say, they can enter it, it's like an arrow, they can stop right over there. Take it from the behind, take it from the front door. And then turn it on.
I think of the night, I see the nice thing about having this this space and having the the draw, the driver. Even a box drive, drive in.
Car going around.
You know, the stock, just right around the building.
So the deliveries would be off hours, so the parking lot would be.
Off hours, as long as like nothing goes wrong, it's some, there's some points, exception, like they are coming in daytime.
Right.
But most of them, for example, they do over minutes.
So you'd be do, doing deliveries outside of business hour?
Oh, yeah.
So before eight A M and after midnight?
Oh, yeah. In actual, probably like I would say that, I'm getting a lot go from the Littleton and Main. These two tons are like, you know, the tolling most of time, but. Unfortunately, we are not able to serve.
Most, most of my, so that I work with. Uh get their deliveries between three and four A M. They're gone.
Especially the weekend, when the kids are not sleeping.
That's a problem.
The delivery?
Yeah, it's the most.
Free and delivered, it's people live down the path.
Is is, I'm sorry, but can you go back, Bill? See, is that, is that a fence there that you can close?
Yes.
Okay, that, so that might might give it, um. If you close that. And possibly planters in front of it, and that'd be an easy way, so we can avoid that parking issue. So the cars, so that's going.
To narrow it.
To narrow it. And maybe use it for um. So you can maybe planters. Which would be nice.
Yeah.
Or trees. Is that, that's, there's no use for that. For that gate. But I'm not sure what's there.
Yeah, I mean, we have a minimum one way drive side that's dictated by the fire department, but. I doubt it's that big, so yeah, could be, could narrow it.
Right.
And narrowing it would inherently decrease speeds.
And and provide more visibility, but they put it on the sidewalk, because they wouldn't account of the vehicle quite specifically.
Very nice plant with a nice tree there or. You know, beautiful flowers or.
Well, I think the applicant is planning to do that on the other driveway, or a planter and stuff there, that.
Yeah.
Which would be nice.
But but I have a new way from. Building it, so they'd be able to see the front of it.
Yeah, I did like the new planter. You know, along the side of the building on the exit side. Just because it does provide more.
And that.
More space. Or less space, I guess. Um.
It's just a thought. To be safe.
I'm committed to total landscaping, to the, to the building, whatever. Side. Where do you want, I mean, we've got, there's a current. Situation that they had some plans, but they're, they're gone.
Yes. Yeah.
That's all gonna be be done.
Right.
Um we're looking at that, at that barrel. On on both sides, this this goes as well. If you wanted to add something, but now the driveway. We want to do that.
So so they would be driving. Um further. Towards toward building instead of around the corner. To be just the um to the building next door.
Right.
So we won't have to worry about any parking. Blind sided.
All right. Bill. What do you think is the best way to move through this?
Well, I think that um, if I understand in the boards so so far, that the. The narrower the driveway, we're talking about accomplishing with. In um planting improvements or.
Yep.
Um. The um. The. Hours, you know, hours, we've discussed, we can set that. Um and then the uh issue of um. Delivery personnel are only to be from Domino's.
Yep.
So that if the board wants to go through and discuss the considerations. For respect the permit. Um, I would think that uh we can go through those um. Discuss how. Apple can be somewhere. And if they don't, we consider, you know, how. Is appropriate. And again, I think without a drive through. Component, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Um. All right, so let's start working through the special permit criteria before I. I do know that there are people. Here for public comment, and I will be. Uh opening that up in. A bit.
Could you start with the D O D firm?
Sure.
Was that the D O D?
D O D.
Yeah, before what they propose to uh comply with the D O D term requirements?
So that is on um section um.
If we wanna um.
More, yeah.
We can probably.
Four point six.
Yes. And if we wanna stop sharing the thing, we probably can do that now. All right, so uh.
Oh, quick. I'm sorry, but a quick question.
Yeah.
We now that driveway, I'm noticing that the dumpster. Is in the corner, is a truck.
Oh, easily.
Okay.
We just manage to dark picture everything they.
The truck will be big enough to go through and pick it up, you know.
Oh, and we screen.
Yeah, that's right.
It'll be strange.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, sorry. You have the D O D. All right, so. This is the extra criteria in addition to. The regular special permit criteria for the D O D. Um. The proposal constitutes a high quality development in regards to construction materials, architectural design and site design. Which will enhance the downtown and immediate neighborhood and provide significant benefit to the residents of the town of Maynard. I know that the uh the envelope of the building is not changing, but.
Not at all.
Footprints is not changing.
And first, we both. With the sign in the front.
Yes.
Is that aluminum?
Uh each one.
The domino.
We don't have sign yet, it it's not.
The big just dominoes, the logo and the one on the front of the building.
What we, what we gonna put it, uh it's gonna be kind of like a plastic and. What we, what we gonna put it, uh, it's gonna be kind of like a plastic and. I'm working with the one of the sign department, they already pulled like, uh, um, they are done like the. What are the requirement for the town based on that they are gonna follow up and make the one. With the lighting and the shiny. Something to like make it center like.
Yes, I remember a bunch of our illumination requirements, so, yeah.
What that sets to look like at midnight, how bright it's gonna be, both the. Parking lot lighting on the side. So what have we got that?
What are the, like, you found, whatever you guys are liking, I'm okay to like, make it that baby, because it's better for me to like, make it as shiny as possible at night to make it. Street is like. No spoke, and at the same time, of course, I'm gonna put lights in the corner of like the location. Building, to make it like a parking lot. With lights.
Start about the way we did with, um. But but you didn't illuminate illuminating along the sidewalk. Well, I mean, actually, that just came to me, because, yeah, that's always my concern is illuminating the sidewalk.
You've got that.
I don't really care about the business as much, but.
Right.
I'm thinking two things, one is. We have all these lighting rules. And we also have the issue of they're requesting. Seven days a week to midnight to have this thing lit up. So I'm having a hard time.
I know something.
Trying to make a decision based on a casual conversation of what it might look like. You've got a, you've got a light. The town has a light, right, right in front of a, right in front of the building. Then it's lit up. See that, there. Uh, if we're talking about light, it's. It's all serious, but I know it's the energy efficient. Signs and the lights that are, that are inside the sign. Which, which are. Less expensive, but but give off less light. And I think that they call it lights. Uh, we've never had a case, this is the first time. Never had a case that's in terms of a light. Uh, signs, it's number of problems, because it's. You know, and and days gone by, they would put lights in front of the signs. Blast the light off the sign, which you're pushing to go. And it doesn't give direction, that doesn't happen. The light for the sign is inside the sign. Can you see the sign, but it doesn't generate a whole lot of light outside. Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the impacts on the butters. Especially residential. I didn't see it, and I don't. I didn't see it. I don't have a way of doing that. All I saw down there was business, I didn't see.
And also, we just mentioned that until midnight. We are just like, as long as town is okay, we can able to keep it like Monday to Sunday to Thursday eleven, on the Friday, Saturday, you can't midnight. That way, like, usually people are up like until Friday and Saturday, that's the day that people are sleeping usually, right? I don't want to take it down to here.
What is the, do you know what the lighting situation is in the back parking lot?
Right now?
Yeah.
No light.
No light at all?
I, I suppose.
Are there going to be, you know, security lighting added for anyone who does late-night pickups, late-night carryout?
Until we open the store, yeah, we can put like the sunlight, doesn't bother to like, you know, the. Presentation area, but of course, it's gonna be enough to like, you know, do. Help the people to like, you know, Monday driver.
Yeah.
That's something definitely.
Is that gonna be on the side of the building, or?
I'm thinking like, you know, the writing of the owners. We can put like two of them, that way like, you know, the one corner is gonna help to like the front side, the other corner is gonna help size. And it depends on like, how it's gonna, how strong it's gonna be, we can put maybe like, both like the sidewalk as well.
Yeah, I would like to see what that might look like, just in terms of. What areas you're planning on illuminating. You know, um, cause if the parking lot is totally dark. Currently, it feels like. Something.
It's it's easy enough. To put a light on each back corner of the building.
Yeah.
So you just, and and those lights are geared towards parking area.
Yeah.
And the dumpster.
Right.
Uh, without generating a whole lot of light. Place, that's easy enough. Strictly a small job for electricity.
Yep.
We'd be happy to do that. So just unclarify. That I've forgotten the word of myself. We've tried that three different types of lighting, right, we're talking about in the lighting of the business itself and the. The lighting, security lighting. And potential spillover for any butters. And we're talking about lighting the street with public. Um, for illumination of where, I forget three different.
Yes. Um, all right, so the next. Criteria is when applicable, the proposed development will provide effective protection of the Assabette River from stormwater, right? So what is the situation with the stormwater with the, is there? It's an existing system. The proposed development will improve the functioning of the downtown by at least one of the following means. Provide a significant improvement to the usage or number of parking, public parking spaces in the downtown area. Provide a significant improvement, so let's see. Sorry, I'm trying to remember. You offered a number of improvements. Which was eliminating a vacant building. With the, you know, maintaining the parking spaces on site.
And will also, will also be business. That can service other people working in other businesses in that area. They want something delivered to their business, we're right there.
Yeah.
Won't stop by, lunch on grab, something to take back. Whether they do that. Providing a service. There.
And then planting flowers in the whiskey barrels and maybe wherever else, you know. Um, and then the last thing is dominoes will be contributing to the tree fund that services the entire community. What's the plan for the tree funds, but has that been discussed, or is that just?
Well, we, 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 we've discussed before. It depends if it's the town. It's gonna require us to spend a couple thousand dollars. For a traffic study that. We really honestly don't think it's need. We'd much rather do that to the town. For the, for the tree.
Right.
Basically, you mean like. We are going to apply another special permit for the pickup window, and instead. During it needed like the traffic study. But is that show you like, you know, that we don't affect a lot for the traffic?
Yeah.
Instead of making traffic study, we would not like the, we need to that money to like the farm. Without like, you know, the making a traffic study.
I don't think anybody's asking for a traffic study.
Nobody is.
Kind of asking for safety policy.
No, no, not that.
Not a trap.
We want like that platform, special, the deal said, I mean, you need to have the traffic study to be able to apply for the. You got it.
So that's in the future, in, for the future.
Yeah, for the future, that's why I'm gonna.
Stand why you feel like you don't need a traffic study. Maynard has a. Busy downtown and a lot of pedestrian traffic, and that building has been vacant for long enough that I do think it's reasonable to. Take careful consideration into. The pedestrian traffic flow, the vehicle traffic flow and the parking situation. Just because that's such a large centrally located site for sure, you know. Um, that's one of the reasons why it's such a great location, but that's why we're taking special consideration.
And and again, we go back to. Where we started, ninety percent of our business. We deliver.
Yes, but that delivery occurs in a vehicle, so that's why we're talking about it.
And and there's probably. Three to four. Enchances and exits per hour. For our hired by drivers.
Okay.
And leaving that site. There really isn't. A lot of traffic coming along and going out. On an hourly basis. Um, the by drivers. We've got two orders. At the time. It's one car leaving and then. Fifteen minutes later, that car's coming back. We're not generating full lot of traffic. We really don't have. Uh, the A's.
Okay, but you understand why we have to work our way through that. We can't just have people come in and say it's not gonna be a problem, because it doesn't work if you do that, so. Does anyone else have any other comment?
Bill, is it your understanding that? The tree fund donation is gonna meet the. Gonna meet the nine, four, six, three criteria?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Was it your understanding? That the tree donation will meet the nine, four, six, three criteria?
Then that, then typically the, um. The tree one now is administered by, uh, DT.
So what do we talk?
Communications.
What would, what, what would that donation look like?
That's how. What are the usual, because like the donation? On that, um.
I don't know, I'm just trying to, I have a special permit criteria, and I have to find that you have provided a significant improvement to the pedestrian experience. If I don't find that, I can't approve this. Would you consider two thousand dollars? I don't know, somebody got twenty hundred trees there is.
A windy trees?
I don't know, what does that do? I mean, the stuff over by the cinema, the stuff over by the cinema, that that middle aisle, what, what is that?
We have tree, we have tree bump areas, we probably have some people come line as well.
I don't know, I mean.
I honestly don't know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even want to speak out.
And I don't know, then.
The.
And maybe, what was, what has it been for others?
For contributions?
Yeah.
Typically depends on the scale of business. They've ranged, you know, we've had, we've had larger projects and ended up furnishing. Uh, street trees, we have ten or twelve street trees, we've had curves or tree wells. Reconfiguring, we've had, uh. You know, just contributions to tree bumpers smaller. Uh. And I would just remind the committee about that, which is, which was a good move, but we. Subject all special permits to the downtown overlay district. To this requirement. Where even though it's an optimal zone, if you remember, we changed that a couple of years ago, so. Every business coming in that requires a special permit is going to be subject to this.
Right.
So that's why we try to be careful with the scale. So if, you know, Bill's sandwich shop comes in. And it's gonna be a fast food. You know, it's gonna be different than if you have a larger business, that was the purpose of that, and that. That's why the contribution tree funding is. Hand it out.
Well, I want to make it very clear, this is, this is a domino's franchise.
Yes.
Okay, I just don't think like the five hundred dollar. Okay.
Uh, and we also do have, maybe, uh, we can, and made, uh, treat, they probably tell us what the last room this interested with, um.
I'll, I'll be trick or, and I wish I knew it's.
Okay. Yeah. I couldn't, I just don't, I couldn't tell you exactly. That's a number. You know. I don't, I don't, and I'm certain it depends on species.
Five hundred might buy the tree, but it's not gonna buy the work.
Okay, then that's making one of them.
All right. Feel like we have a lot of considerations, um. I am going to, unless the board would like to make any other comments right now.
I think just the, I don't want that ADA parking spot. To get lost here, I'm just, I'm not convinced that that's. One, you know, spot is actually meeting the ADA requirement, so. My one.
Yeah, so usually ADA spots have extra space dedicated so that. Accessible doors and ramps can be used.
We will get the dimensions of an ADA level spot.
Okay.
And that's, that's what that will be.
Okay.
Line, should be be wide.
I'm pretty sure that that's like the width of the entire drive aisle.
Be put for the car, be put for the landing area. Let's, doesn't seem practical in the location you have, but perhaps there's a different interpretation of the law, but. I don't think anybody in this room was able to make that call right now.
Well, what, what is, what is the rant that you're talking about?
The wheelchair ramp, for a lift, getting out, out of the van, out of the, maybe that van.
Oh, 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 sorry, I thought we were talking about coming into the building. Around the front door.
No, no, the, uh, if you, if, you know, when you see. Parking spots, you know, in a fresh parking lot. They're gonna have the striped space adjacent to the, the, the car so that they have space.
Now, I'm sure we each have people on.
Yes, I think at this point, I'm going to open this up to the public comment. Um, I'd like you to rem- remember to. Members of the public and the board and everyone present. Uh, communicate and act respectfully, um, if you'd like to raise your hand. Either on Zoom or in the room, I will call on you, um. When you recognize the speaker, please state your name and address. And the comments and questions should be directed to the planning board or to. Me, the chair at the moment. Um, and for the interest of time, please limit your engagement to about two minutes, thank you. Um, I'm gonna get started online with.
Lisa Dunn.
Lisa Dunn, sorry.
Hi there. Um, hi, I have.
Could you just state your name and address real quick?
My name is, it's actually Lisa Oaks Dunn, I'm at one eighty-eight Main Street, um. Here in town. And I have a ton of concerns about this, um. Let me begin, uh, one is that, like, our entire downtown is a designated cultural district, and part of that requirement is to be walkable. And I think I already heard some people talking about Maynard being very pedestrian, uh, friendly and very walkable. Um, and that's a requirement to have your cultural district status as well. Um, so you don't, I, I don't think you really wanna put something in that could be detracting from that. Um. I also have concerns about it being situated directly across from Naylor Court. My concern being is that. Delivery drivers might decide to shortcut their way through and go straight across. Uh, the street in order to go through Naylor Court, that could be a detriment, um. And just, you know, the idea of a drive-through in and out of there is just, it just seems to be a detraction. Completely to what our downtown is, which is a pedestrian-friendly, walkable. You know, place to mill about, I, I just don't see this as a fit for there, and it seems like a better place for it would be Maynard Crossing.
Um, just, just to clarify, a drive-through is not being proposed at this time.
I thought I kept hearing that.
It has been discussed, but that is not the application that's before us tonight.
But you will have delivery drivers going in and out of there.
Yes.
That, that concerns me, especially because their business model, I think, is based on. Very fast deliveries, just the, the whole aesthetic of it just bothers me in that space. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone? Yes, go ahead.
Yep, Sarah, she's seventy, so it's that, um, just when you're gonna add lights.
Yes. Uh, what do they call that? Night, night?
Dark.
Dark sky, thank you. Um. There's a style of lighting that's dark sky compliant, meaning it is, you know, not detrimental to wildlife. It would be a great consideration. Um.
That's something.
Lindsay, online?
Thank you, Lindsay McConkey fifty-two Summer Street, um. So I have concerns that I think you guys are, are talking a lot about, which is great. Regarding the traffic in and out, heard the applicant, I think what I heard was that ninety percent of their business model is based on delivery. If that's the case, and I think he said, I, I'm, I'm sorry if I haven't heard this correctly, but. It sounds like three to four times an hour drivers are coming in and out. So I'd, I'd argue that, um, while the applicant has generously offered to pay for trees and planters. An improvement of the building. The significant increase in traffic to that space, particularly over a sidewalk. Uh, and the entry and exit are on either side of a crosswalk, um. I think is going to outweigh any beneficial effect of trees and planters on the pedestrian experience. I think that there is no benefit to people who are walking, um, if ninety percent or more of the business is based on delivery. Um, this doesn't particularly contribute to the neighborhood character. Um, I'm just looking at the justifications, you know, for special permit, so I would just argue that, you know, I, I, I hear that the planning board is considering. Traffic issues and safety issues, and I just wanna add that it feels very concerning, this is a, already a pedestrian high-traffic area. The sightlines are difficult, um, coming around the buildings on that side of the sidewalk as you go to cross over either of those driveways. And I'm not confident that, um, this business. Does improve the downtown experience, um, to the extent it's stated in the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, check, I want to remind you that the building permit has already been planned.
It's a good bill. The building, uh, does press. It's not. The, I mean.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's not something we can, we can take into consideration. Is there anyone else? Any other public comment? Yes, Linda.
Linda, there are two questions for clarification.
Uh, yes, for clarification, but still direct them towards me, please, thank you.
Yes, um. So on the application for special permit, and they've been accepting of the. Drive through, not drive to, in the video, um. But clearly says keep. The function name. Um, which the new tenant wants to bring back for not thinking, so. I understand there won't be cars queued up necessarily, so that is the fact. Isn't there, but are they, I mean. It is a window that will be reactivated.
I do believe that a, a future meeting that may be the goal, but yeah, at, at this point, that pickup window is labeled as such, but we are not evaluating it for being activated. At this. Under the conditions of this permit.
So that's what I have to say, as I remember the board and also. Especially. Yeah, considering Maynard of the. Other location, uh. But that spot is certainly concerning. Again, Russia wants to, has to be a report. Entry. Anything there. I do go down in a lot, I will admit, I use that driveway from time to time and pulling back on it there, um. So back out of, out of rest. Onto Main Street is really a station, not very, very long. What would be the east side? So, I mean, yes. It's really challenging, pulling, pulling up, so vehicles that are motivated to do things quickly. It, it's, I, I am very concerned about the location for that. And, again, um, it's saying, it's sad, but. It's only encouraged. The more to. Maybe go. In the best, but. It, it's a different. Uh, location for that. Uh, and I go, I have one more thing about the vulnerability downtown and the art and foster. The community where. Businesses in, in bringing people into town to pay the high. And you.
Alright, seeing. No other comments online?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I'm here, Mary.
Yes.
The, um, Google Earth that. I'm not sure where the parking lines are. It appeared much wider. I, I don't know, it is. Um, the image was distorted, so I would encourage very much. I know most of you are probably very familiar with it. But with the, you know, with that perspective, you know, I was talking about now, maybe.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Um, yes, I think that the two adjacent buildings being. Having no setback from the sidewalk, I believe, just is going to inherently, you know. Effect sightlines. Alright, so. Moving forward, I feel like we have identified some areas of concern. Um. Some of which can be maybe mitigated by narrowing of driveways. Um. I'm just trying to think if there's anything else that could be done. To slow people down, you know?
Put a speed bump on the way out.
Before the side, like.
Yeah.
Step back, yeah, step back. It is a good idea. Um. And I do, I would love to see something more about the lighting. Just going from no lighting in the back. And if it's gonna be a place that's accessible by customers who are gonna be parking there, even if I know it's not that often. Um. I would like to see what that's gonna look like. What else was on the list that we just talked about, I mean?
Well, that, this, I think, well, lighting was, was key. The, um.
The ADA spot.
The ADA spot would be. Uh, and then the, um, narrowing of the drive. And. Um, perhaps what will be, the, the applicant will have a chance to hear what the board's concerns are in public. Like, public concerns, and again, at this point, um. It may be some way you can, you can, um. Incorporate that and bring the design to the board, maybe address these. These topics that we've played out, and if we change, yeah, dress all over. Which is concerning. You know, we'd be expected. But, uh, a lot of these could be, um. Play some of the. Of the plan, well, for, uh. Easily with the lighting concerns. The basic, I mean, E part of the scenario, that's, you know, the, the. And, and the board recognizes. Uh, and it's all good, you know, in the past. This was, this was a banner at one point, this was other uses, it's not. New, there's, there's, there are concerns, in particular, when that, this on you. I agree on, so. I mean. It's worse, but I don't mean to, perhaps, yeah, come back with some.
That's what I was thinking. I, I was thinking that seeing an update to lighting. Uh, an updated ADA spots, maybe rearranging the parking spots. Um. And as you said, it may work out that you don't need, that, you know, you have the six plus the one ADA, maybe. Maybe you don't need that many parking spaces if, you know, you need to make one of them doubly wide. Or something like that for the ADA spot. Um. And then some form of narrowing of the driveway or speed bump or both. Just to help with the sightlines on both the entry and the exit. I think would be. Would allay some of the concerns over just the speed. Um. Domino's oversold the speedy delivery thing, now everyone's worried about it, but. Um. Does anyone on the board have other things that they?
Yeah, could, could we at the board? Talk about. Hours of operation and deliveries. The hours of operation. You don't look at the hours.
No, I looked at. I looked at McDonald's the other day.
Seven days a week?
Everything.
Not possible. They had like the, no.
If you could find that out for us, that would be great.
Um, check on them.
McDonald's is eleven.
Donald's is eleven. Yeah. That, where is that, there is some.
McDonald's, uh, I'll find out.
I guess that's a good, good lighting too, right?
Champion.
Yes, or they're open at eleven.
Oh, Main Street Liquors?
Yeah. No, not liquor stores. All this stuff, whatever, flat of bars, and instead of just guessing what's kind of. What's our? We have licensing rules, we're. This is on the street, we're out, so I'm curious what those hours are.
Okay, fine.
In days of the week.
Just in terms of nearby businesses and what, what the effect they are having on.
Hmm. Yeah, if the PC's open till two AM, I'm not sure I care that this place is open till midnight.
Right.
Yeah, but. If PC's only open till. Right there, two AM on, or Fridays only, well then, maybe you don't need this place open till midnight.
I think cafes open till ten PM.
But, I don't, so I'm just curious what are. The town's rules on that.
I'm, I'm good at that.
Okay, and then, the other thing I'm stuck on is. Three AM deliveries. That's right. And. We, do we have that going on?
Restocking.
Yeah, do we have that going on in any other businesses downtown at three AM?
Uh. You can check McDonald's, I don't, to, to, to CBS, now.
CBS does, I can hardly find my house.
At three AM?
Yeah.
All the people started like the whole night. They didn't want to pick the, like, the business and like, it's less traffic, that's why they prefer, like, the whole night.
I don't know, I'm just not familiar with that, so I just. Like, you can.
Yeah, that's how, uh, McDonald's, I don't know what to, little reason, I've been looking.
I guess, yeah, so that list plus just. Now that I have a better handle on what this is gonna look like, I'd like to. Deliberate, maybe work a little bit offline about. The solution to some of these. Concerns or further deliberation. Does that sound acceptable?
You can, I think, uh. If, 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 okay, we're talking about. On, uh, September twenty-seventh.
Yep. Yeah, we've got.
Twenty-seven or twenty?
Twenty-fourth.
Uh, twenty-fourth, yeah.
It's on Wednesday.
Um, how does that meeting look for us, Bill?
Right now, right now, well. I'm just, um, we did, let's say, Tom, twenty-three, I'm gonna be.
On graduation. You should not have, you should not be here on the twenty-fourth.
I am.
Um. Uh.
It's the one after that.
Uh, October eighth?
Yeah.
And also, if, if you need to, we are, we do accept applicants by Zoom. So, you know, um. That's my.
Okay, yeah, stop to the right end of me.
Okay. So it is October eighth.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Um, and I think that any other. Uh, comments from the board. Uh, that might be constructive. Could be passed along to. Bill. And of course, members of the public who wanted to voice things are always welcome to address the chair, so. By email. Um, so I will make a motion to continue. The hearing. For. Uh, fifty-two Main Street, thank you. Um, until October eighth, twenty-twenty-four at seven PM.
Well, sorry, man.
Uh, we will do a. Hand vote, all those in favor of continuing the meeting to October. Alright, so this meeting will be. This will be continued until then, Martha, close the hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me give the setup next to the store. Where I think I made.
I got one more for you.
Oh. That. Yeah.
From the last page, any update? Can you do those, like bullets, because it looks like Jim quit because he doesn't like fight.
Yes, I can make that, then. Oh, yeah, the.
Which one?
Here. Oh, Amanda got a grant, Tim Coleman stepped out.
Okay. Sure, throw a face in. Jim would, Jim would never. Uh. Um, anything else on the minutes?
In here.
And I will make a motion to approve. The minutes from August sixth, twenty-twenty-four with. Bill Franchow's additional spacing change.
Second.
All those in favor, by hand. Four zero. And is that it? We don't have any planner updates?
I do, no.
To you. Alright.
Uh, a couple of things, um. I'm gonna keep it, because it's a. That's, anyway. Oh, no. Um. As. Everybody, I think I've reached out to you all, uh, we have received a forty B application. Uh. I, I don't wanna get into it right now because we're gonna have a, um. I'll play it off, but I wanted to give you the basic ground rules of what's gonna happen and where you guys come in and. What's gonna be involved with going forward with this, because as you remember, um, uh, forty B. Is handled by the zoning board. And our zoning board is, um. Will then get comments from the other boards. Before that happens. And I, it'll probably get to you tomorrow, I drafted it today, but I'm going to send. You a memo. With links to everything that's there. And we, we have an initial comment period, so I'm going to say. Not that the comments are, um, going to be provided to the housing partnership, Mass Housing Partnership. About. The proposal. So I think the best way to do this, when I send out them. Is if. Everybody sends me comments, and these have to be quick, uh, we have to have them back in thirty days. Sorry to do that to you, I can't help it. But, um, but maybe. We could, if you send them, you may. Will, I'll, I'll compile the comments and stuff. Um. Now, the second part. If. We, we're not going to be, um. Adjudicated this. But we can have it as a standing item. And speak at it, speak about it in our regular approach meeting. So my suggestion for this board would be going forward. Till this is resolved or whatever happens, I would say, let's, let's post it on every agenda. That we can talk about, so as opposed to, could be questions come up. That makes sense to everybody. And we'll, um, now, so far as specific staff has thought. Now's not the time, you see my memo, and you can reach out to me individually, if you know. I've spoken to all of you, I think, about this, thank you. Um, so that. The other thing that's gonna happen. And it's, I. Misinformation's gonna get out. And there's nothing worse than that, so what we've done, we set up. Um, all information is going to be, well, it's already available. On the town website, everything that we have in. And I'm gonna try and make a, a, a fact sheet, we've done, because this, this is difficult enough to navigate. So we really, we wanna keep it squared away. Um, and, uh, so I'm gonna have all the information. That I get will be available there and you can look at it. So. I have a miserable couple of days, yeah. But, um, so that's coming, other stuff, it's good, uh, goodness. We, um. We got, um. A grant submitted, and we received it. But we have a, um, we got some good feedback on our power meal. Uh, pump station grant. We could be really, forget that, so you could get, made it past first rounds of that, and that's, that's, so that's really, um. The other thing is we got a grant for, um. Uh, bike share. And it's gonna be multi, uh, it's gonna be, we're gonna get one bike share station here, I don't, do this to Julia's.
Yep.
Did a great job.
Nice job, Julia.
Yeah, and, uh, it goes, uh, it's gonna connect, you know, with acting, and, um. So we'll bring bike shares back, we'll do that, so.
What's the timeline on that?
Um. We're having a meeting on it, I, I, I'm bench hitting for Julia. And having a meeting in, or we, in September. So, um, great. I, um, I'm kind of leaning on the details of that, just, we had great, you know, we, we had Zach figure, did great success with it, I mean. In scale, in scale, success. But, um, people liked it, so that was good, too. So, um, and lastly. Um, I have, um. Chris Klein came in a couple of weeks ago. To sit in for us for our alternate spot, now that Jeff is full-time. Uh, and Chris Klein sent a, uh, um, letter of interest and request him to be considered. By the select board, your. In that. Um, so that's all the news I got, and that brings us back to.
Great.
Most of goodness.
I'm sorry about your day. We'll, we'll be right there with you as soon as you send us that memo. All right.
Have, have we got any town meeting articles back?
Yes, oh, thank you. Okay, firearms, yes, MBTA communities, yes, mostly. Uh, the map, I had to tweet one thing on the map when they're looking at it, uh, but the, 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 the text, all approved. Sightline, no problem, ADUs, forty-five day extension, they want a forty-five day extension on their ADUs review.
So Bill and I attended that webinar today.
Yeah, I mean, there's about. Half the items in our part eighty thing.
Won't be able to be.
Won't be able to be approved, but.
I'm sorry.
So I'm okay, but the big thing is. The lawyer who was presenting the information, presenting her opinion on the interpretation of the state law. Said that. It allows multiple ADUs on a lot. But you can special permit. Second, third, fourth, or fifth. So at a minimum, we need to work out special permit. Zoning for multiple ADUs. And unfortunately, the state law starts February second, and we're not going to be able to do it until, but theoretically.
That they're, they're saying multiple ADUs on this without a special?
No, one without a special permit, after one, you'd need to get special permits, but they are allowed.
Well, actually, it said you can do a special permit.
Right, not that you have to. Nine hundred square feet or half the.
Size of the.
The main dwelling. Whichever is smaller, so like.
They, they also have the interpretation that every ADU can earn a square feet, regardless of the size of the. Of the primary.
So they're still, I mean, they're still working this out, right? And guidance was going to be issued by who? I forget. I think we just have to wait and see, but.
I don't, we'll have, we'll need ADU zoning language for. We need it fixed up. By like December, but hopefully the rule, hopefully the interpretations from the state will come out before that, until we know what we need to react.
Yeah, that, that's fine. What else was on?
No owner occupancy. I don't know what they're going to say about our affordability, though. Everybody likes affordability.
Yeah, the affordability comment was, you know, the question was, can you require the unit to be affordable? And the response, the legal ease response was, well, it has to meet the. I forget the reasonable. And frankly, for us, it just might be. Because our affordable numbers are market.
I was very annoyed by the whole thing.
But, you know, it's just, you know, it's a new, it's a new law and the rules aren't set until somebody gets sued. So right now, everybody's just figuring out the best they can. And who knows how the interpretations are going to come out from, from housing, but you know they're going to be on the housing side.
Well, yeah, I do, I do, and, and I, you know, I, it's all done. Best of intentions, I understand.
Now that we just finished ours only like a few months before, it's fine, fine.
Yeah, it, it, um, what, uh, good news is firearms, they said, they said our firearms is very well done. They said that there's nothing here that, that, that they, they went and they went, they were careful with. And they sent me comments, I, I, they're coming out here, I have seventy years to that, I got that. All good there, um, so that's, that's good, and it's a reasonable one, they liked it, and, um, yeah, you said it was good. And, uh, the forty B, I mean, the, uh, M E G A.
So it's not finalized though, because of the map?
Well, no, the, the, the task is not finalized, I had to redo the map, they said the map was just wrong, so we just moved it up, sent it to them.
They don't add a little something up on your screen.
But, but no, that was good, and then the next step for that, M E T A, I've got to get that. Now for our compliance, you know, with the state and, uh, it'll.
The school stuff was continued, but they had submitted some updated plans. If we have comments on the updated plans. Do we wait to the continuance or do we?
When I was asked. Will schools only continue to, it's right. I would, if you looked over the plans, uh, uh, Green is going to be. Providing us an updated set, and they've been doing a pretty good job with it, but I think they really appreciate when you have comments. If you guys have all sent some comments that have been good, and I can show them and read, and I, I, I kind of like that system.
I like this.
So rather than having like this five, five stuff, like, you know, so if you have something, I'd say send it to me, I'll send it to Ray.
Oh, so I didn't look at the thing we got, so the thing we got, the updated spreadsheet we got was. The applicant edits, but not Green's.
Correct.
Review of those.
Yes.
Okay, so the applicant said, oh, we did this, but we haven't had Green say that.
Correct.
Right, right, and there was, there were. Changes that would be indicated on the plans or to do review, and then I think Green will submit us.
And why was Green doing that?
And then they all, yeah, we spoke to them, and then we just got them.
Deliver their.
Comments.
Their comments to you.
They've been pretty good.
And I saw that the Green Meadow was on the tree committee's agenda for this week, so we might hear some more things from them.
Yeah, yeah, uh, the tree committee now. I'm going to put them in our, our editors, for our, we're out, so that, because the one thing, it's fine, there, there, there's some good input stuff. What they have to do though, for the annual hearing, we have to have them stick to our deadlines. Because that's the, that's what's aggravated, you get everything, and I put that on routing with, okay, please have comments back by this day. So by putting them on that, they'll know, so I don't get them, I don't have everybody's all done. I needed time to keep this on. So I got.
Firearms, good news, yeah. MBTA firearms, good news.
We're a lot better than we were.
All right. I'll entertain a motion. All right, I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll start it.
Show of hands. Four zero.
Great, thanks, guys.
Thank you. You're going to turn that on?
You're rolling your breath.